Cell phones off. Cell phones off. And light the phones on. Okay, we don't have John, right? It's just us, hey? So, 103, I'll call the meeting to order. This is a Market Township Board work session. Today's Wednesday, January 15th, 2020. And we're going to talk about strategic planning. We have no public. No roll call. Make sure we're all here.
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Rattar is here and Supervisor Duran.
Here.
Staff present is just manager Gerard today.
Empty hall. Okay, strategic plan. We've got the old one in front of us, 2013 to 2015. It's the last one we did. And Dave was kind enough to give us his opinions on what he sees.
I know many of you find that amazing.
Move, we accept it and go home.
He redlined our version and Randy's got it up on the wall. We can talk, step through it, cross things off, change it. Who's hooked up to what? Is your hook tucked to your computer?
No, this is hooked up to the screens and then Dave can move it. But he's got the clicker to move it.
When did you find time to do this?
He's retired.
Retired.
I am too.
I'm sorry. What I did was, because this is what Randy sent us originally. And I find it confusing to try and go through it and make sense out of what was there and try and update it. Because the biggest thing that I found going on is you don't understand what they were talking about in some parts.
I have lots of question marks on mine.
There's a statement there that it doesn't, just doesn't make any sense. So I just started from the beginning and went through and made the obvious changes. And how's that work?
The other way, this way.
The ones where, okay. And so I just went through and made the obvious changes, all the way back to highlights in history. And then I had to spread that out a little bit because I went through and got the ones that I could remember. And I'm not sure the dates are right. Those are just the ones that I could remember and I'm sure that there's.
That's pretty awesome.
Some that needed to be added to.
I think they're closed and that's what we're looking for, is closed.
Oh, my.
Yeah, and what I found is that it's difficult to word them in one or two phrases that make sense, everybody knows what you're talking about, and to make sure everybody that was involved in it gets credit for it. Because I think if the public's reading this, they're going to want to, and you don't, like, for example, if you don't mention the swing set that was added at Kitty Park and give the Rotary Club credit for it, they would know it would be a little out of joint.
Great point.
So anyway, that's what I put in there, what I could think of. And then I went over to the SWOT analysis and that's where I just added my comments on the bottom. And I took some out that I didn't think really belonged in there anymore, the one that, I guess the one I didn't agree with was on that first page of SWOT analysis under the weaknesses. I didn't understand why relying on volunteers for manpower is a weakness. But anyway, I threw my three or four comments under each category and I'm sure everybody's got more comments, we just need to whittle them down. And I'm not sure all the comments that are in there in black from the original one need to stay.
They might be dated.
Yeah.
We've got a few that I've crossed off and put question marks.
Under the opportunities and threats, I don't think growth is an issue anymore.
Yep, I have that too.
And the one next down, there were about three down, it says, it just said business growth.
I think it went from the one before it, that's the way I figured it.
Yeah.
Encourage business growth.
Yeah, I couldn't follow up.
I think the dots.
Yeah, the only reason I sent it out is because that was the last one. It's adopted, just to give you some idea of what some of the history was that predates, basically, being on the board in terms of what the listings were, basically. Yeah, I mean, it's been outdated for four years.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts initially were that some of those you could read and not be sure what they were talking about.
Yeah, very vague.
I didn't figure it hurts to take the amphitheater out, I don't think that's the reality.
Well, it depends, and if Dennis comes back, that was his baby.
The expand recreational trails and bike paths portion of that, we're pretty much working on that now. So, I mean, I don't know if that's an opportunity that needs to be continued, the work with Rio Tinto and North and South Road, I think that's pretty much a dead issue.
Mm-hmm. And the sense of community utilizing untapped markets with an RV park? I don't even remember that one.
Ah, do you not?
That was like.
We talked about that over at, well, 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 Road up in that area, we talked about stuff like that.
Oh, I don't remember that. Rio Tinto. Future responsibility, maintenance of roads.
Well, yeah, and some of those had to do with acquiring that 120 acres from the city.
Yeah.
Adjacent to our well field, that's what, the RV park, the amphitheater, that was all part of that, the sports complex was all part of that potential.
Yeah.
So I'm just thinking with the SWOT analysis, if we didn't do anything else, we just need to make sure it's worded so that you can read it and understand what we're talking about. Unless, I'm sure it all made perfect sense when we put it together in 2013.
Well, some of it was a carryover from before that, too.
Yeah. There are just, there are just some of it there that just, and then in the goals for 2025 after that, there's two of them there that didn't make a lot of sense, I'd keep them there. The one for an action plan for township road repair and expand and execute the recreation plan priorities. The roads are done, the recreation plan just got finished.
Your update, right, to the recreation plan, yeah.
Yeah. And then on the last, the last one where it's a goal statement, they're just, I would think that needs improvement, if you all read them, I just don't see where a good portion of that is relevant anymore.
They crossed off a bunch, yep.
No, you crossed off street lighting.
Street lighting.
Only because we have a lighting ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
Which takes care of most of it.
Well, we shouldn't visit that anyway because it's not being followed, so we shouldn't.
Well, we had a thing on the lighting ordinance that said as, as.
As needed or required.
As we were able, so there was a, there was a thing that the township wasn't on the hook to do everything in the first year.
But I don't think what you dropped.
Maybe what we need is a separate page that says "ongoing," just so it's on paper that we remember to go back and look at it. That isn't necessarily the next five-year goal to do something with lighting, you know, as an example.
You've got street lighting, you've got highway lighting, and it's all covered.
Well, you can leave it there, just put "ongoing" in the column there, I guess, but.
Rather than a date. With snow removal, traffic routing, across all that, active road committee, we've got one. We've already prioritized roads. That's the whole road thing.
So it just struck me that there's a lot of work to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of clarification, if nothing else, on what's there.
So when we did this before, and I don't know if you came to any of them, back in the, this is our, like, be like our third one from some of the board.
I was involved in the 2013 one because all the committees and everybody was involved.
Okay, well, the last one I remember was at Lost Creek. That was everybody, we had recreation, then we had another one after that.
2011.
Yeah. And we can do that, just sit around, maybe we start over, maybe we don't use this.
Yeah, I just.
Other than the history part, we need to get to three, four, five things if we want to really look at whether it's five years out, or 10, or 20, however far we want to go, we need to consider all of that. But I was hoping for like three short-term goals, like in the next five years, what do we want to do?
Well, a lot of them should be some of the things that are in the master plan.
Good point.
Should pretty much line up with that, otherwise, what good's a master plan?
Mm-hmm.
So I just, and I understand where Randy was coming from by sending out the SWOT analysis pages, because that's really where you need to start and go both directions from there. I'm just not sure that that SWOT analysis, the whole thing is even relevant to what we're doing.
Mm-hmm, too many things have changed.
Well, seven years has changed.
Yeah, so maybe we do another open house type thing, get all of our committees together, bring in the business association, planning, and start over with the board and whether we, I mean, you know, like a chalkboard of the paper.
If we did before, if we did before.
And if we just do it ourselves.
Yeah, what the last time, the reason wouldn't work again.
Yeah.
What do, how do they feel that we should be advancing ourselves?
Because obviously, you know, you've been working more with the master plan because you're working on it, so at the planning level, that's more of a focus all the time than we don't. You know, we're focusing more on policies. So we probably know those better and then bring in the road committee for an update on what's happening, where we are in our, this is like year five or whatever.
Started, oh, okay, first year we did anything was 15.
Yeah, okay, so year five. And just get, whether we do breakout sessions or just as a group, you know, get the boards and flip the paper over and write it all on there.
Yeah, I think the road thing is, it's pretty much covered for the next 10 years.
Yeah, they are.
Probably 12 years.
Yes, well, it says all 15 years.
It's just made. And you got the same thing with the, with the public works side, with the, if the asset management program gets together and gets up and running, it's pretty much covered. You pretty much go by that unless you want to start changing the asset management plan.
And just a comment from road committee is that the roads off program does work, it's working very well, you know, so that's.
Where does Commerce Drive fit on this year's?
That's not ours.
It's not on.
That's the county.
It's awful.
But they're working on that.
This year it got bad.
Supposed to be this year.
Yeah.
2020. They're looking at that, oh, that test road surface with ground rubber.
They can go get some crushed glass from the authority.
No, it's not, no, it's not glass.
Not yet. Actually, I think tech's involved in it. This is one of their tests they're putting together. I think they've already done some elsewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been working on it for two years, I think, but it's not.
But I get, you know, after I got done going through this, I think the really important part of putting this whole thing together, from my opinion, is to go back and look at the wreck in the road and the master plan and see what's in there for their goals and objectives and see if that fits into the, we're kind of backwards. We should have had the strategic plan first and did those other plans second, so when we get all done, I just hope they line up.
Yeah, but strategic is just part of it. I mean, we don't focus on that, we focus on the master plan, so.
Your strategic side is fluid. I mean, you know, who knows what's going to happen after November, depending on which side wins the general election.
And even with this board, too.
Well.
New staff, no more.
Beyond that, I mean, you have, yes, and threats out there that are totally out of your control. I mean, you've got a major threat just across your eastern border. City of Marquette, no matter what they say, is struggling financially. They're way, they're way bonded, way indebted, way alone, further than 24,000 residents can fund. Especially with more than 50% of the property up the tax roll. They're going to have to be looking somewhere for revenue and they only border with another community, us.
What about a secondary water supply?
Well, I think we're going to see that in the future come back again.
We don't know what Rattar is going to do down there.
Keep pumping the water.
We don't want, we want good water.
No, but they've got an aging system.
Yeah, it could go down.
In which direction are we going, you know? Are we going to go west?
Well, the coast is one of 492, that's a, close to secondary.
Go up that way? Yeah, because we've got some infrastructure in there.
Because it's not, it's not, you know, financially, it don't make sense to go into the lake from her, off of Big BI Way.
You already have your second well site.
Yeah.
It's already been tested. But, but I guess the point is that they're, they're fairly rapidly going to get to the point, you know, and Randy knows and the other folks that are there knows, they're going to be fairly rapidly get to the point where the bills are going to come due, and they're not going to be able to fund it with what they have available. The hospital's not going to come online for taxes for another 10 years. The energies, if ever.
If ever.
Yeah, if ever.
If it comes online, it's going to be tax-free or something.
No, I don't think they'll ever draw taxes from the hospital, it'll be an autopsy before then.
Sure, that's their point.
But, you know, they, they look at us longingly, they look at the township longingly simply because of the $300 million tax base that we have sitting out here on the highway, that they'd love to assess 26 mils on. So I mean, that's, that's one of your major threats that you really don't have any control over. You know, you've done as much as you can to protect the border, the boundary through acquisition of property, and that's the only way you can control it, is own it. So you've got everything, South Road Street pretty much sealed off. They don't have any good way to get to 2,400 acres, which would have to be their first step to get into the township, would be to access that 2,400 acres. They do have easement across the golf course, but they can't get across our property. So, you know, you've got a, you've got another 35 years of agreement with Sands Township for the South Hill, so they can't get at it that way.
Yeah, I think if you want to purchase that, I think some of the property from Sands, I know Randy talked to me one time, he said, you know, I'd like to go talk to your board and just talk about that and talk to you or whoever, about selling some of their property to us. So I didn't know what exactly what part of the, where we, township and Sands meet, so he was talking something like that and I didn't know, I thought, Randy, I don't understand where we are.
Yeah, we have a 425 agreement now where we, we don't own it, so we tax it and we control the zoning, so.
We giantly own it.
But that's one threat, I mean, that's a major threat that's out there. The other is federal government and that state government keeps chipping away at your revenues. You know, and the next election could be significant in regard to that side of what revenue sharing and with everything else. Businesses are going out of business because they can't compete with Amazon and some of those other online businesses. They're talking about trying to tax them, well, as soon as they start to tax them, they'll move out of the state. It's a warehouse, that's all it is.
I was writing around at Township Town Hall, saying, what if this, and what if that? What if, we probably, I think there's a lot behind our fire department, maybe we should buy that extra lot in there in the future, is there a lot there?
Uh-uh.
The church bought it.
I thought, I thought there was a lot in between them, them and us. Should be screwed up there. Oh, well.
Well, it's not a matter of screwing up, there's no way you could compete with what they paid for that. They paid $1.2 million for a $400,000 lot, so many.
But then you look at water, you look at the water, you look at the business district, affordable housing, I said right on, where do you help, where do you put affordable housing? Something like a Troich Park or something like that, over here, over there, we can't go into Bishop Woods, we can't go to buy the well thing, where, can we do something like that to get tax revenue in, you know? I don't know, I just.
Geographically challenged here.
We are.
492.
Yeah.
The only place where you've got open ground is up there.
That way.
Up 492, before you get to Elto Development. There's 127 acres in there.
Roads, I think we're in pretty good shape with that.
Well, we're in good shape physically.
And where do we put businesses in a township? You know, we're developing this into a business area, but offices and stuff like that, what about somebody else coming in to put in a store? You know, okay, Yonkers, okay, what they could do with Yonkers, if somebody could go there, they could buy the bowling alley and next to it, put another complex there.
You have to have viable products, though.
Exactly, exactly.
Retail or office or, you know, I think that's part of what.
We need to go to some clothing stores up here, we need at least two of them.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked Dennis at the meeting there about that, you know? Because that's the biggest complaint about people, the residents, that they're either ordering online, they have to go to Green Bay, or even Esplanava, Esplanava, that Marshall store, and then you go to Marinette, Monami, you've got another store down there, and then they have to go to Green Bay. And that's the biggest concern, I think, a lot of the residents would like to see is.
But remember, the businesses who are here and have been here have been successful.
Exactly.
But their corporations are not.
Right, right.
It's not the.
Parent companies.
Yeah.
Yonkers are doing good, but the corporation wasn't, you know, that's a pull over. We've got over here, Pier One, is it Pier One, is that what it's called?
Yep, yeah.
They're good, good, I understand.
They're, they're a classic, they can't compete with the online market. Everything they have is important, everything, so, and then they have to add a, you know, their overhead on it, where the Amazons and the World and the other, there's three or four of them now that do, you know, direct delivery, ship to your home furniture. Can't compete with that, because they're warehouse operations, they don't have overhead, they don't have staff.
That's why I think the meeting with all the residents and the business people and that, what would they like to see, what are they dreaming for, if they dream it out? You know, you never have to be afraid to dream. And we had a good session a couple of years ago about that. People don't understand a lot of stuff, what we're trying to do is, especially when we had the roads thing, you know, we had 18 meetings, people come in, they talk about this and that, and then they were spin off on something else, but, you know, the people who came, they were satisfied when they left, except for the one Dave taught us.
Same thing with our strategic planning last time.
Yeah.
You know, we had a lot of good input.
But, and we had fun at it. You know, it was, it was fun.
Yeah, we had it in different places, we were at the fire hall.
Yeah, it was just very entertaining, but the best one was Dave told that lady, lady, my road is fixed, and she busted up laughing, she laughed. And she was positive coming in, but she just tried to play hard notes. And then you have to, you figure it out after a while, she starts going and finally Dave said that, and she laughed. And I heard that she was telling other people, you know, what Dave said to her, and she said, I think that was so funny. I don't know her name, but, but Dave looked up the stuff and what could it have cost her, and she got all her answers.
Well, a lot of that, Pete, is somewhat, I mean, the only thing the township can do is we can be inviting place for these people.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Because when they come in, any business that comes in sends their entourage to do analytics. And if the analytics fit for this region or this area, they will put their business here. And if it doesn't, they won't, so. So the only thing we can do is make sure we are business friendly, basically, make sure you have the infrastructure, we do have a lower tax rate.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, low tax rate, we do have the infrastructure, we do have the property. It's just that businesses, I think, right now, especially in this day and age, are not expanding as fast as they once were.
They're being cautious.
They're being cautious because a lot of them are downsizing, actually, right now. So I think we're, we're fighting that right now.
Well, it is, you know, your, your primary threats basically are defensive. I mean, you know, that's, your threats are all defensive threats. It's revenue, you know, the state through the tax tribunal has slashed your, your retail revenues. They continue to take pieces of property tax away and exempt more and more pieces of property and uses of property. You've got more and more of the property that was developed to be revenue generating being sold to non-tax entities, like the church, you know, buying that big chunk over there that was prime development property, but church is going to go on it, so there'll be no revenue from it. Those are the kinds of things that you really can't control. I mean, a lot of people ask me, well, why do you let a church go there?
You can't drop it.
We don't own the property, you know, so if somebody sells it to them, then that, that's the issue, you know? The, the only way you control what happens on a piece of property is if you own it, that's the only way you can control it, you know? We, we have about almost 500 acres of land that we own. Most of it's done by the well field, but, you know, we've got some other small pieces scattered around here and there. But businesses coming in, yeah, it'd be great if more businesses come in, but you have to provide the services to them and you're not getting the tax from them. So, you know, it's, it's a kind of a downward spiral.
What does our year look like for new development?
Well, we're going to have, you know, we're getting site plans already, I mean, developers are calling us, but again, you know, as soon as they build something, you're going to run to the tribunal. They all do, Meyer's gone, Meyer said, oh, no, 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 we won't go, we won't go. Well, they are, they filed. You know, so any business, you're going to see Riverside filed here shortly, I guarantee you. Riverside will file. Any new business that comes in, the only ones that haven't so far have been actual restaurants. They've just not been able to make the same argument, but any of the retail sector, we've had big boxes, mini boxes, mid boxes, car dealerships, gas stations have filed through the tribunal. Current's filed again, you know, so, you know, it's starting to be in the commercial residential. So, you know, business development is great and bringing in business in is great, but you're not going to get your revenue from it to cover your expenses of serving, and that's the issue, you know, is, it's.
It's got to be a way, it's got to be a way.
Yeah, we spent quite a bit of time a few years ago when this started, trying to figure out how to tax them or feed them, you know? Maybe, maybe we need to pay somebody to start researching that.
Well, here's the problem you're onto, if they're paying their legitimate taxes, you can't charge them for it.
Well, if it has to do with fire service or something, or utilities, I don't know, why?
They're paying their 2.8 mils on what the state says their value is.
Yeah, you can't discriminate.
That's, I mean, you know, we've tried, we've tried to figure out ways to do it. We can't come up with a legal way to do it because they are paying what the state says their appropriate taxes.
Can't put a township tax on it.
No.
Can't put a township tax. Statutorily are barred from creating a new tax.
What was the loophole that was Indiana upon, that they corrected it? What did they do?
They passed legislation.
And the state refuses to do that.
The state of Indiana passed legislation that said you have to be in business for 10 years before you can appeal your valuation.
The state refuses to do any of that.
Our state does not.
A chamber behind them and everything else, a lot of pressure.
Big business.
Well, most all the states did that, all, probably two-thirds of the states that contact us right away, their state legislators passed legislation, you know, banning that from occurring. Indiana's was 10 years, others are various, you know, various timeframes, that you have to be in business occupied for a minimum period of time before you can challenge your taxes.
We're not going to read some of what our legislature, we're working on something about dark stories, if there's anything we can tell.
No, it's no legislative.
I haven't heard nothing, you know.
No legislative, you'll see it come up again just before the elections.
Elections, yeah.
Well, we're fighting for it, we're doing this, well, no, they're not, they're not doing anything.
They did a very tactical thing, they're doing the small areas first and conquering them first.
That's what they did.
And then they're moving in, when it's too late, they move into the big areas whenever the precedence is set, and they'll just move in and.
Well, the reason for that, Randy, is that the smaller ones didn't have the money, it was left to let them fight them.
Correct.
So they just rolled over and, you know, accepted what they were going to get.
Well, that's, and that's where the tax tribunal went, because now Meyer started out, you know, and the others started out in these small, more rural areas where they had their stores, now they go into the tax tribunal against us and say, we've got 60 stores that are at $25 a square, they're the exact same stores we have here, why does this one hit 60? And the tribunal says, 25. I mean, that's exactly what they did, they, they built up a number of successes before the tax tribunal and used those as their comparable market. Same stores, same buildings, same products, and more.
Until the state fixes it, we have no, we have no, nothing in the game.
Everybody was hoping that when the Democratic governor got elected, that, you know, with the Democratic prosecutor and everything else, that something would happen. Nothing's happened. Nothing's happened. If you promise to give all of you back your four point six percent income tax on your retirements, haven't seen anything on that.
They're more worried about changing existing laws to get more people more benefits.
Well, and that's, that's another threat for us as a government, is there are going to be more protective requirements in terms of hiring and retaining and more costly benefits being applied. Legislation is pending right now. The state governors proposed it already. New, new set of protections for the LGBTQ folks that are already protected, the same as the rest of us.
So, I'm thinking if we start, you can either plan out half a dozen open houses or whatever you want to call them, that's just a generic term, and invite folks in and get our, our board.
That's what we have to start.
Revamping this. You can either use it or start over.
Well, I think from your standpoint, I think the board itself, you seven, should come up with what you think over the next five years, your critical issues are going to be. And then fill both right into it and then open the rest of the public. You know, you already did roads.
Recreation.
You know, you're going to hear snow plowing, you're going to hear ice control, you're going to hear speed limits, all the stuff that you have no control.
Yeah, it's unrealistic.
Yeah, you're going to hear that. But, but if, if you're, you know, what are the top three or top four things that the residents think are important? You know, and you have that on your community survey. I don't know if you want to go back to that and look at it, or, or do it. We, we dealt with roads. Roads was at the top of the heap on almost all of them. That's dealt with. I think fire service was next. Well, you've dealt with that. You've expanded service, you added ambulance, I mean, you know, you've done that. Law enforcement, you got a contract with the sheriff. You know, there's some expansion there that somebody might want. Who knows?
We, we do that, we did, and we did have a, get a millage for that.
We did. Yep, the residents supported that.
Keep the current level of service we have.
So, those things you've already addressed. At the point that you can't.
Trails and recreation, we're either working on it or.
Yeah, they're everybody. We do really well with recreation. You know, you already know you wanted, you want to improve the, the ice rink, which we haven't even been able to skate on this year. That's ridiculous. I mean, they're forecasting
Better call them that one.
Mixed snow and rain all this coming week.
Oh, thanks. John, go ahead. Just chime in.
I have a. I've had some thoughts about a possible tax that I'd like to express, and I'd like to give an example of where it did work. It's going to take a few minutes, so you have to put up with me.
That's all right.
We all know the value of having paths, walkways, and trails. And we've heard from a variety of people how much that means to make us look good as a township. I agree with that, but I think that we could do something to aid the township's responsibility for maintaining those areas. And I think we need to give some thought to it, and I have an idea. I think that our citizens can be convinced, like they were with the roads, that having the paths, the walkways, and the trails is a tremendous advantage for the township, for our business community, for appealing to people who might come here to locate here. And it just has a great appeal across the board. It can make the township look better if we do have that and we do plan to expand that. But, I think it's important that we take that next step about thinking about what is the value of having it if we're not going to maintain it? And I think that we can address that. A small tax, a very small tax, could be presented to the citizens of this community saying that we would like to have in place a fund that would accommodate the need for repair and restoration of the trails that we have and plan to have as we embellish that thing. I think a small tax could be presented that would allow the establishment of that fund that would just simply aid the township as it tries to address that problem. I think it would have appeal to the majority of the people that recognize that that is a good idea for the township to have paths, walkways, trails. But, we need to convince them that their part in it is needed to maintain it, to have restoration. Because it's not going to look good to have those things, trails, pathways, if they don't look good and we don't maintain them. The township shouldn't have to bear that burden all by itself out of our general fund. I think that we could consider trying to invite them in with a very minimum tax to do just that. And the, the goal of there is not that that fund would accommodate all the needs. We're still going to have to do something out of the general fund, but it would establish a fund where if somebody wants to make a contribution, that's a place to send them. It also has a value with our relationship with the state. We would become a township that's willing to tax its own citizens to do what they need to do and we need to do. Maintain, restore our pathways, our trails, and that. I think that we can do that. I, I think if it's properly presented, a very minimum tax could establish that fund, and it'll have tremendous value when we are applying for grants and whatnot at the state level. Because we can point to the fact that we did go to our community and asked them to participate in what it's going to take. It, it would establish that, and I can, simply asking for a vote of our citizens to support a small tax to create a fund to aid the township, to maintain and restore paths, walkways, and trails within our township, I think is something that we can sell. I can give you an example. Twenty years ago in Grand Marais, they needed and asked for a state funds every year through their representatives to build a break wall. It was a needed thing or they were going to lose their bay. They got nowhere with that. A very small community. Burt Township has very few citizens, very few taxpayers, and they were getting nowhere. They were convinced that a small tax on their own citizens, if it passed, would aid in the conversations that were made at the state level, that here was a very small community with very little wherewithal, that, that they were willing to pay something. And they stood out as a good example at the state level when we asked for funds. It was a turnaround at the state level because we, they were the first township that was there without their handout for money. They were there with another argument, that they had taken steps to tax their own people to aid. Now, that didn't, what, what they got didn't grow overnight. It took a few years to build it up. But, the state, the reception at the state by state legislators, mostly from the metropolitan areas, begin to realize this was a unique effort being made by a very small community that wanted, wanted something, but they were willing to first tax their own people. And if, if the tax that's in the community is small, that doesn't matter. The argument is great. So, I just ask that we give some thought to that under opportunities. Because I think it would have value, and if the amount that we're asking for is minimum, it, I think it would pass. That's my story.
Well, the only question I'd have for you, John, is as far as the maintaining part, a lot of the trails are not ours in, in the.
Our, our trails, our paths, our, the, the things that we are obligated to maintain.
Yeah, if we're going to do sidewalks, I call them sidewalks, that kind of thing. You're talking about woodsy trails?
If it's, if it's a.
Say recreational facilities.
A walkway or a trail that we have established and haven't, and we are obligated to maintain, that, that's the ones that can be addressed.
Well, the only one I can think of, Randy, would be the south trails that are on our property. We haven't really gone out and made trails at the No.
I think, I think John might be talking about the safe routes to school trails.
Okay.
The.
That's what I said.
Safety strips along Warner and four ninety-two. The things that we plow and maintain.
So, not the necessarily recreational stuff.
Well, sort of.
Just any of it.
You tied into that.
Look, you can, you can get into the details of it later, but if you could just accept the argument that we need to give some thought to that and how we could address it. Just take a look at some of the. We're talking about taking the north end of the tunnel. And, and creating a walkway along the top of the highway, and then coming up and connecting it to what we've got now. If, if it's possible that that's our installation, of our commitment is there, we, do we want to have some aid by our own citizens that we can point to, that that's what we do when we get committed like that?
We have to see what that costs then, too. We have to buy, you know, Snowmobile Club's going to cover a lot of that stuff. And the No Kaminon Trail and the North Country Trail. You'd have to pin it down to what assets do we have that we're talking about? That's the only thing I'm questioning. Because it seems like so much of what we have around us, unless you're talking about the sidewalks and the equipment we just bought for it. But, if you're talking about trails and stuff, most of them are already, somebody else owns them.
If somebody else owns them, then somebody else is responsible to maintain them. We've got, we're on the cusp, I think, of doing more with trails, more with paths, more with, in our own community. And I think that this argument can be presented to our own taxpayers if it's a minimum tax, that we need to do something to plan for the restoration, for the repair, to maintain them. And if we can get some help from that, if the fund is established, it gives us a place to send contributors.
Randy?
This idea is not new because I, several years ago, I talked about this. As manager of Dr. Art says, we're responsible for the basic needs of the township, essential services. Recreation and trails is not that part. And our budget has been stretched in recent years, and I did make the comment a year or two ago, or maybe even further back, that it's going to get to the point that if the residents are going to want recreation in general in this township, we might have to go out for a small millage for that. And that, I made that statement several years ago, and I still think it holds true now. I mean, as, as we grow and our budget gets stretched more and more, it's kind of like the road commission. You know, we got essential services we have to provide. And that's, and there's not, no way getting around that. We have to do that. And recreation is above and beyond that. And I do understand that that's an essential part to your community, but it gets to the point where your resources get stretched where you're going to need some help with that. And maybe we're at that point now. You know, that's what I'm, that's what I've talked about years ago.
Dave is, Dave was.
Was he? I saw your light first. Go ahead, Dave.
Focus, man.
Yeah, well, I was first.
I, going along John's comments, I think if you look at where the majority of the trails need to go in, not just the maintenance of the existing trails. And I assume you're talking about the pathways within the, along Warner and, and those are, those are what, because those are what we maintain, right? But, the majority of anything that goes in in the future is going to be non-motorized connecting the DDA areas to the residents. And I don't think you're going to have a big, be able to sell a lot if you're talking about putting pathways in, in Trowbridge to come over and connect to pretty much nothing because you can't get anywhere what you get here. But, I think you could get creative in that financing. And I think a place to get creative to start with is in the DDA. You can get some millage there, that you're not reaching out to all of the residents, but you are reaching out to a lot of the dark stores because they're all fall within that DDA. You're not getting their valuation back up, but you're getting two more mils out of what you can get out of their valuation. And I'm not suggesting that that two mils, which is the max you're going to levy there, but it's going to put in a whole lot of sidewalks. But, if you get creative with that two mils, you can provide a lot of matching funds for grants for sidewalks. Because I think the biggest, the bulk of the sidewalks that are going to go in in the next five to ten years are going to be within the DDA, connecting the businesses and providing non-motorized access to our residents. Once you get that done, and yeah, there are some maintenance concerns with that. But, once you get that done, then you can, you can present the case that we want to connect the neighborhoods to those sidewalks. And it's, it's a ten-year project. I mean, it's not going to happen overnight. But, I think if you put together a thought-out plan as to where you want to approach it first, and I think where you need to approach that maintenance and the development of trails is, is within the DDA first, because that's where all the emphasis is right now. And every time you put one in, you have maintenance. So, there has to be some maintenance dollars there. We've been floating around a recreation millage for three years that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's such a bad idea. I think it's a good opportunity to get, find out if the residents want to take part in it or not. I mean, it's, it's up to them. They either want to maintain them or they're not interested. They'll, they'll lighten no one's shirt. Quick, hurry.
Yeah, we'd have to make, be real specific.
Yeah. Exactly what it's going to be used for. If it could be used for the maintenance of existing trails, or it's going to be used to put in new trails. I think one's an easier sell than the other one.
And to me, connectivity with the businesses is not trails. If they want to talk about recreation, that's why I was trying to pin John down. It's got to be literal trails out in the woods or connecting to them. That's, that's the recreation side.
Rather than call it recreation, I would call it non-motorized access.
Yeah, that's what I mean. We've got to be specific. So, people know, you say trails, people are thinking about woods. people are thinking about woods.
Yeah, and I don't think, I think there's enough independent groups out there that do the trails in the woods and maintain them. But I don't think there are, there's no maintenance on the non-motorized pathways that we have in our developed areas.
Yeah, that would be different then.
And I assume that's what you're talking about, John.
Okay. Ernie and I already turned you off, so go ahead.
Following up on Dave, what John was saying, millage for, for trails, call it what you want. I have to feel that you're not gonna be able to sell it by going out and saying you want millage for trails. On roads, everyone gets touched by roads. That's what they're looking at. So you have to come up with another way to define what you wanna do. I think Dave's talking about recreational millage or something like this here. That is something I think you could go for. And the greater majority of people, I think, would move in that direction and that. I can see the benefit for trails in the township, for the benefit for the future in that. But I think you have a very hard sell to get to the common resident in the township to support a millage for that.
Well, you could just call it recreational maintenance.
I know, but, but you have to, rather than trails, you have to move trails within something and go from there. And then you can sell it. Like you did in roads. Everyone has a road in front of their house. You're able to sell it that way. You can go there. So you have to look at it in another way of packaging it, but in amounts to.
Dan?
Have we ever looked at a user fee, a permit, you know, anything like they do for snowmobiling statewide? Or, there's a lot of, lot of bicycles that use the trails, maybe have some type of a user fee for them to use it, you know, some type of a stamp, not a stamp, but a pass that they have on their bicycle. And I don't know how we would enforce it, but I just didn't know if we ever had looked at something like that.
I don't think we have. The No Kaminon Trail has their user fees with the, when they're skiing, you know, in Forestville and all around, wherever their properties. They have user fees. You get a little tag. We actually partnered with them at the hotel. And they have a, they have a donation box, too, at the trailhead for each one of their trails. And many folks wanted to, you know, throw some money, and they could. They also have, which were, we partnered with them, like day passes, anybody that wanted to use the trails. So you could come into me, get your day pass, and we put the date on it and everything. And I think we tried that for maybe five years, and we sold two passes. And we had lots of skiers. You know, people don't have to pay, they're not going to. And I don't know how well they did with the little drop box at the trailhead, if they made money that way. Their, their only way to really, for the most part, maintain their trails is by their memberships. So it's that specific. So, but, you know, township-wise, I don't know. Again, how do you collect the money and who does it and where is it?
One or two have never looked at it.
Randy, you had your hand up for a while.
Well, I mean, you, you do have, you do have a recreational millage now. You pay, you pay a tenth of a mill to the Honor Harvest Trail. So whatever you're talking about could dovetail off of that. Because the rest of, the purpose of the pathways and everything else that you're putting in are to connect to that backbone eventually. That's what it's all about. I mean, even, even the safe routes to school is gonna connect through the tunnel to, to get to the residences on the other side. So I mean, that might be your avenue if you wanna go in that direction is, next time that comes up, a tenth of a mill will make it half a mill. You know, take four tenths of it, basically, to put towards the maintenance of everything else that feeds into the Honor Harvest Trail to the one tenth of a mill.
Leaves you not to define it that way.
Yeah, realistically, you know, selling things like licenses and permits and that, we don't own the land. You know, the, the trails cross our piece. They cross our piece, but we don't own the trails. We don't maintain the trails. We don't police the trails. It's all other groups that do that. The Snowmobile Club, the biking group, or the Kaminon folks.
That's what I was trying to
And they do sell, you know, they sell memberships for the Kaminon. They're open to anybody to use, but that's how they maintain them.
Pete, I think you're next.
Listening to what Ernie said, I was amazed that a while back, they had a meeting at the Lakeview Arena about biking and trails and stuff like that. And I was amazed how many people came.
I remember that.
Oh, my God. It was just, and they were looking through the windows.
They were outside, yeah.
And I just thought to myself, what the hell are y'all crazy? You know, because in our family, out of the nine of us, I was number six, so you know how often I got a bike. So I, we're not into the biking thing. But I was amazed at what people said and how important it was. Now, one doctor came up there and said, I can work anywhere, but I chose here because of this, this, and this.
I remember him saying, oh.
So, I mean, we could test some waters on something like that. It might surprise me, you know.
Well, maybe we just partner with the No Kaminon or the authority, or, I mean, we already contribute to the authority, obviously.
But I mean, look at all the bike shops. And look at all these other things that's been popping up and that. And so it's gotta be important for somebody because, you know, everyone's getting into this recreation. And I'm glad. You know, I don't want everyone to go through the world, you know, being overweight like me. And I really like that when people go out there and bike and stuff like that. I think that's very healthy. It's gonna save, not to get on save a medicine and all of that other stuff. But I think we'd be surprised at how important that is to some people.
The best thing about it is when that fat passes, it's just gonna grow back up again. It's, it was again, you know, eventually. Because it will pass.
Everything goes in cycles, yeah.
This is the current cycle where, you know, all the folks that are hardcore bikers now, in another five years, won't be
Yeah, the generation changes.
Dropping off. Generation changes. And I think the millennials coming up behind them aren't interested in riding bikes unless they can do it on a
Yeah, on a pad.
Laptop or something, you know.
Right now, Marquette is number 10 in the world in, in tracks, in bike tracks, bike trails.
Really?
So, yeah, number 10 in the world. And I got a notice this morning or yesterday morning?
For developed trails.
That Marquette is on the top, in the top 20 in the world for where you should spend your vacation. I mean, we're against Puerto Rico and Cancun. And you go, they're all, most of them are out of, out of the country, out of our country. And here we got Marquette. That's, that's very telling.
True.
Yeah. And which makes me mad about the whole pure Michigan thing.
And it was Utah.
We got an opportunity here and she's screwing it up.
It's just, it's just changing. You know, Utah used to be the big bike. And I go, well, people don't wanna go to Utah anymore because there's too many people there. So how they're, you know, that's the, the natural flow, you know. It's the last five to 10 years.
So we need to keep it. John, you're next.
I'm not locked into any particular way of doing this. I just think that we're on the cusp of needing to address how we're gonna do it. How we're gonna maintain, how we're gonna accommodate the need of restoring what we've got and maintaining what we've got. I can tell you that what happened in Burke Township was that it was a very small community, very few resources. But they did buy into, getting the community involved by some small amount was helpful. And what happened was the people who, they had a tremendous summertime, visitors and people that come and use that community, they were all handed letters that they could take back to send to their representatives in the state and say, support this group in what they're asking for because I enjoy their summertime recreation use. You've got a enormous onslaught of letters that went to people who didn't represent that community. And it worked. And I, I think, I think Randy's right, Randy Retary's right. That's probably where I heard this first, was years ago. But I think we're, we're at a point where we need to give it some thought as to how we're gonna do it. It doesn't have to be the way I brought it to your attention. It can be whatever way, but I think that we need to take steps to address the need that's here. It's, it's, it's gonna come up on us. And the last thing we want is a ragged-looking pathway, a ragged-looking, you know. So, so why don't we address it if we can? And I'm just saying that when we talk about things that we should be thinking about, this is one opportunity. There's, there's greater minds in mind to, how to do it. But I, I just think we need to address it.
Randy?
Again, I think like this, if we do go for a small millage, again, you know how the roads did. We had several meetings. And you can tie that into the strategic plan because recreational facilities will be in there somewhere, I imagine, with the recreation master plan. We'll tie into that. But we've invested a lot of money into the Lions Field Park, and we need to keep that presentable. And I don't think we're quite done even upgrading that yet. I think we're close, but we're not quite there yet. And I gotta remind everyone, and I just thought about this a while ago, but there'll be a few millages for renewal this year. The library will be one. So the library will be one. If we propose, I just look at it this way. You put it out there, the residents will pick what they want. If they want both, they'll vote for both. If they don't want both, they won't vote. And kinda keeps us off the hook because we'll say, you know, the majority rule, they don't want that. So.
We just have to present it.
It's really our job just to present it to the residents and the voters. And, and we have to be careful how we do that. We can't favor one side or the other, but we can give them the facts of the matter. And then they decide. So. But that'll be in our strategic plan that, you know, these recreational facilities are, you know, on our radar. But what do you guys wanna do with them? Do you wanna, I don't think we should create any more at this time.
And then create some staff, too.
Yes. Maintain what we have. And like manager Gerard has cautioned us a lot of times, is every time you create something, it's more staff and more maintenance. So.
Sorry.
And more kinds. So, that's what I would say. And, you know, and I think John is right. If you have a decent plan in place and invite residents to come in, especially the naysayers, come in and present the plan like we did for the roads. You can tell them what we're gonna do with it. And, you know, most people are satisfied. They were satisfied with the roads. It passed very, I don't, it really wasn't an issue. It passed very, very high.
But that's something they asked for, too, that we weren't even presenting that.
Yeah. But the thing is, is we're gonna, we would be telling them that, hey, we're to the point now with all our, it's, with our tax tribunal increase in service to cost, we're to the point now where, you know, and manager Gerard has said, is our, our budget, our general fund budget is getting strained. And some of these recreational facilities and that, it's, if you're gonna want them, you're up to pay for them. I mean, it's getting to that point. And on Dan's point about user fees, the city's tried that for many years and it really kinda floundered because people find ways around it. And it, it's hard to police. And, like, they used to have non-user fees for, like, junior high. You know, someone would just put their resident in the city and they'd get around it. So, I mean, that's, it's a good idea, but enforcing it would be hard.
Well, Randy, when you're writing a grant, isn't it right that, am I right in saying that if you put in that the residents contribute to it, isn't it, you score higher?
It probably would be better, yeah. I would think so.
Dave?
Five points.
Five points.
Five points. Anyway, all this is good, but we need to get back to what are we gonna do with the strategic plan because Randy's leaving us in 35 minutes.
Yeah.
Well, this is good discussion.
And I, I guess what I would suggest is if everybody, whatever you got for the SWOT analysis, if you just wanna gather them all up and put them on a piece of paper and, and the next work session between that and the goals, it would be interesting, and I'd be happy to do that, is get the, write down the goals that are in the master plan right now and the goals that are in the rec plan and road plan. And make, so that we can present those in a separate piece of paper and see if they have any, if they're closely related to what we're coming up with.
Or if they're already on the list.
Or if they're not even the same part.
Yeah.
But I would think we just gather up our SWOT analysis stuff and get it down to a piece of paper so everybody can see what we're talking about. Did anybody else do that, or?
I have some. I didn't write them separately.
I guess so.
Okay. We can send them to you.
If you wanna do that, I'll just, I'll add them to the list and I'll do a whole new screen out so they're all in red.
All right.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So they're actually bigger so you can read them.
So can we do that? Kind of little homework? Everybody get that, either to me or Dave or Randy or however we can do it without the OMA stuff.
If you send and don't reply, you're fine.
Just send the information. Don't do, I try not to say I think or I believe.
Well, I think in this case you can't because you're trying to come up with a strategic plan. So you're not really deliberating an action or anything.
It's more, it depends on what they send them.
You're consolidating, you're consolidating information to try and come up with whether you have a consensus on your top three or five issues or what they, what distilled. And if you wanna, if, if I get them and put them all down on a, send the piece, piece of paper after they're all written down and give everybody a chance to look at them before the next work session. Some of them are gonna be duplicated, but I guess I wouldn't think you'd wanna start editing them in that first presentation. Just write down what everybody says, bring them back and, and pare them down to a reasonable number.
And again.
Or write them all, write them all down and just rank order. You know, everybody rank order them on how you see them. And you'll see how that
And then compare it to our plans.
You're not gonna, you're not all gonna agree on what they are. But no, it won't take much to write the, the goals down from the rec master plan or from the master plan that's coming up here in the next two months.
So why don't you do that? Put those on one file and then see what you get from us. And then maybe even put a tick mark, okay, six people said that this is what we should do and it's already in the master plan or something, you know. Give us some kind of a
But even beyond that, you've got
Can you do that?
You've got a couple of things that aren't gonna be in any of those master plans.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're gonna do about facilities. We're at max space right now.
Yes.
Almost, almost brought that up before, but we got into the recreation thing.
Revenue stream is, you know, revenue streams is gonna be critical going forward because everything's gonna cost more, but your tax base is not changing. With the exception of like Randy said, you've got some millages coming up. And we're in a good spot because all of the millages that we currently have are multi-year millages. So you're not gonna see those come back up, I think, for six, five more years. Well, the other thing, it'd be nice to know from a budget standpoint is exactly how much money is tucked away every year for recreation purposes. And, because all we're doing with recreation is maintaining right now. That's all we're doing, maintaining.
Well, it was Ellen Sargent's wish, back when I first got on the planning commission, that the township establish a recreation fund. And whether we used it for, her thought mostly was for purchasing property. So that we could do whatever we wanted with recreation, whether it was more trails or bathrooms or, you know, trailheads or whatever. She said there's property out there that's for sale, that, you know, if we could even find it and give it a first right of refusal and figure out, and then every year, put some money in, whether it's a separate millage or whatever. Otherwise, developers are gonna pull everything up, you know, and take it, too.
Yeah. Well, nothing's easier on that, fund balances for recreation, that, that's only 30% of what you could be looking at because you can get 70% out of the government.
Grants.
So, out of grants.
Yeah, okay. I see what you're saying.
So, I mean, you just gotta, you can't use them to go out and buy what you want. You gotta use them to apply for some grants. And, because you can get 70% more than that out of the state.
We tackled that a little bit on the DDA meeting last night because you brought that up about taxing. That group will have to do probably a mill or two at least to do That group will have to do probably a mil or two at least to do what we want on this side when they do the 2021 project with lighting or safety crossings or something. The corridor itself, you know, the median part with all the weeds that are in there, we need to figure that out. So if the DDA did, we can do up to two mils without a vote of the people. So, if we levy the two mils on the DDA, we would have some match money for lighting or whatever we're gonna try to tackle. Pair up with the Mike Springer's $30,000 engineering grant we got from MSU, try to pool all that together, so.
We'll be talking with the Lions Field, and it'd be good to have a fund because in the future, if something might happen, there are about three houses over there, if we could buy them and clear them out, because there's two on the west side, and one on the east side. You square that off, expand it a little bit. Us, us over there measuring one day, about the, before we put the kiddie park in, and a neighbor on the, on the east side come up, what are you doing? I said, no, I said, if we put the kiddie park here, we could cut the center of the blacktop out, and put, you know, sawdust or something like that, or chips or something like that. On the outside, we could put picnic tables with umbrellas and stuff like that. Oh, don't do that, don't do that, I, I work shift for it. I didn't tell you to move right next to tennis court, you know? But I mean, there, there are a lot of things coming, I don't tell you, this pickleball thing, I know we all laugh about it, but it's a moving thing, and we don't have space for all of it. You know, you might wanna do something with that. I, I looked at the ice rink and said, okay, what, what happened? You know, and I wasn't drinking at the time. Take lights in the, in the, in the, uh, in the ground, I mean, in the concrete. If you want pickleball, you hit it, the lines come up, you want tennis, hit it up hot, you hit it, you know?
Can you get on that, Dave?
We're all over it. For crazy. I just wanna remind you that that concrete was like $80,000.
Yeah, it looks expensive.
I figured that out when I was driving back down the street, I said, what the hell?
So now we're gonna cut strips in it and put lights?
Well, you know, when you can't do a lot of things, your mind goes all different ways, you know, when you're sitting, driving around, you just can't do nothing else.
How to spend people's money. Randy, what do you wanna throw at us? Or, or were you not?
Well, you know, Clerk Retary, you're right, you've got a full one mil coming up, you know, at the library, if you wanna bite that off. I mean, we've been talking for a long time, you know, the township is going to need to request, John's right, we're gonna need to request additional revenue, because our revenues are going down, and our costs are going up, whether it's utility costs, whatever, the city Marquette just again increased last night their garbage fees. Well, it'd be very long, their garbage fees are getting blown up. They went up to $3, another $3 a month for either the bags or the carts. That's a sizable increase, went from, you know, $15 to $18 for 10 garbage bags, if you're in the city.
Well, it'll be another $6 for tipping fees, what's the penalty?
That's why it is, is because of the tipping fees, that was their argument.
So it's 12 something now, instead of six.
And they increased from $6. Yeah, and that, that is going to continue to happen because their business plan does not support what they're doing. They will not have the revenue, and they're gonna get it from constituents, that's where it's gonna come from. You know, so, I mean, that, that's, that's coming up. I mean, you know, I think Clerk Retary's absolutely right, you know, we are somewhat protected because of the three millages we've got now being long-term millages, but I think folks are gonna have to really start assessing, do you wanna spend a mil to fund the library? Or do you just want to get library memberships? I mean, a mil is big dollars, a full mil in the township, that's not everything. It's not a whole village.
It's not a full bill, but it's .9.
.9, it's .93, I think it is. And you need to put on your calendar for the next election, we need to go back to the full .4, .6, and 1.5. They've been rolled back by heavily already. So, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be able to fund those, we wanna, we wanna keep them there, so we need to get them backed up to the full mil.
That'll probably be an August election item.
For August.
Well, let's try to, if we can all give, give our two cents on, on what we have in front of us. If you wanna take Dave's and work from that, or make your own, even if it's just, suggest one or two things in each spot, we can make the next work session a real work session. You know, maybe we meet in the conference room or something, so we can spread this out, and
Committee room.
You know, red line stuff, and move things around, and take them off, and make it a real, yeah, we can go in there. Maybe we invite people then to that one. But we need to have something.
Nick, you need to have one yourself.
Well, that's what I mean.
And then invite people after that.
Yeah, so we need to have a real work session.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if, if everybody filled out those, that sheet you got right there with those four, four SWOT analysis dubbings.
And use it from this.
And just, and just turn them in.
Just like we had one there.
And I'll, I'll just put them all on the same, on the same sheet, and we'll just flip them all up on the screen at the same time, and talk through them, and throw them out, and put some more in, and, and that, together with some goals for 2020 to 2025, if everybody's got some ideas on what goals we should shoot for, and with respect to the goals, I would drag them out of the plans and, and put them down, so we can see if those goals line up with what, what we wanna do, so.
I'd like to see that first, I think, before I start pulling it around, see what the master plan, our plan goals are.
So, would just do the, do the four SWOT categories, and, and then I'll do the goals besides that, and next time we do a work session, we can look at the two of them together.
And that, and I think what you're starting to see now, is what, the first thing we mentioned earlier is, this should have occurred before planning and recreation and roads, is their goal, is their goal should be sub to your goals.
Yeah, so now we're kind of...
Well, I think what you're gonna find is they line up pretty well.
Very close.
Yeah, but even when I looked at it the first time, because it was coming out in sections, and some of that, I was thinking, you know, we haven't talked about this, just wait a minute, now you're getting ahead of yourself, you're making these suggestions. Some of that's Mike, because he's real pie in the sky, and, um, just making ideas, you know. Sure, they're gonna present it to us, and we can go over it, but it would be nice to have that input.
My person asked me to, I come across a note, clean out my computer room, but, what can we do about getting the gravel roads that we have, half roads and stuff like that paid? He said, I'm paying the same road tax as anyone else, and stuff like that. Where is the pressure? I said, the pressure has to go under my county road commission to start with, and tell them that you want that.
You'd think by now, after we've harked about this forever, that people realize it's not...
Yeah, like, like he said, he said, uh, the, uh, my value of the six, seven houses that are on the street, I mean, is it all over? I forget now, is more value than some of the full blocks in the township? So I don't know.
The property taxes don't go to roads.
I know, but I mean, he's talking about values, the houses and, you know, how new they are, and his shirt stretch and stuff like that.
But he built them on a road that was gravel, and it cost less for the property.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, I mean, it's the same old story, you know, you build at the end of a road, and then you want, well, how come I don't have water and sewer? You have one to make, well, you bought it there in the existing condition. And that's the same argument we have with some of our former employees, is about dead ends that want to pay it well. You wanna pay for it? Well, of course not, well, you paid less for your property because it was an undeveloped, you know, so it's just...
Go ahead, Ernie.
I just know what I keep across, okay?
In the last, in the last Parade magazine, there was article on here, uh, lived to, to 100. So I went through it, and I started reading it, and, and, living in Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Monseville down there, some of that stuff shot back at me and that, and a couple of things, uh, uh, big city benefits. Like I said, without big city hassle, like bad traffic or bad air. We don't have bad traffic, we don't have bad air. To me, that's a positive of coming in here, and that, uh, they have, uh, 1/5 of Minneapolis is Parkland. I know that, because I utilized a lot of that when I was living out there. It was all over and that, and all kinds of stuff and that going on there. So you had opportunity to biking, running, walking, whatever you wanted to. And they also said that the health prop was, uh, start list for healthiest, fittest, bike-friendlyest, least stressed, and best access to mental health, things like that. We have that here, I think. So these are positives for the township and that.
While we have all the visitors we have.
I love Prince Harry, tell him up here instead of Canada.
Yeah.
Another one is, uh, age-friendly, community prioritizing, intergenera, inter, intergenera...
Generational?
Generational projects. And the one thing that got me, and I, I got thinking about, put a bench in your front yard. I said, okay, where's that front yard, and that? And then I got, okay, we put a bench there, who's gonna maintain it? Especially when you get two feet of snow, and that, things like this here. Going through that, there's some things here to look through that, they're positive, far as the township is concerned, and could move through it. And I wrote down one thing, uh, what would make the township a place to create and/or develop a business, or build a home, or move to the township? What do we have to entice these things to happen in that? How do we generalize it? Things like this here, and that. And what the, what do the residents wanna see and do in the township? And what would make the township a, a destination point? Things like this here. And how do you, how do you even address some of that, and that, too, some of that? Destination point is what activities? And low taxes, good air, no bad traffic, things like this here.
We need a couple more bigger events in the township, along with what we have out here. And some person was telling me the other day, uh, how Marquette Township, what a great deal they're doing because they have events, and they're trying to, uh, promote even the malls, and trying to do that with music and a thing. Here's a business person saying that about Marquette Township. He said, I live in Chalky, but I really like what they're doing out there, which is they're doing out there.
Did you tell them to move here?
Not, no, Brian Carrier is what it's, that's how it's doing.
When do you wanna meet again? We can put it on the next agenda to schedule it, but are you thinking a couple weeks out, maybe?
Couple weeks.
For another work session? Okay, and put it on the agenda to schedule something.
That works.
Okay? So go home, do your homework.
It's a good exercise, and it's really a great exercise to sit back and, and think, you know, what, five years from now, what, what do we think we need to have?
How, how thick is that wire?
All I gotta do is adjourn.
Okay.
Are you gonna, are you gonna send out a reminder of your ways of action items?
Well, just do it.
It's your job.
Just do it.
No, to remind everybody to get their, uh, SWOT analysis stuff in.
To do their homework.
If you sent the goals first, that might trigger it. They'll have something to look at, and then they've got this, rather than starting from square one. That would help.
Protecting their ass all the time.
You know, sometimes we just have to talk, and not, not worry about a work session.
Exactly.
I mean, not, not working. What time are you giving us? 2:25? Okay.